First order of business is to review the minutes of the July 11th meeting.
So move, I second it.
Oh, in favor? For new business, we have a subdivision application from the Bickfords for One Main Street. We have a letter from the code enforcement officer stating that the application is complete.
I make the motion to accept it.
A second it. Oh, in favor? Okay. So we need a motion to condense the subdivision requirements as recommended by the code enforcement officer.
So move.
A second it. Oh, in favor? We have to do a roll call again.
No, do not.
Hi, Margaret.
Sorry about that.
We have just, we are, have just started looking at the subdivision application that Bickfords have submitted for their property on One Main Street. And we've had a motion to condense the subdivision requirements into one as recommended by the code enforcement officer. And we've had a motion to accept and a second, and so now we're going to do a roll call vote on it.
Yeah, I heard that, Jean.
Okay, okay, I wasn't sure, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. So now we will do the fact finding. Oh, okay. Feel what you're proposing to do?
Sure, so House of One Main Street, Roger Sachs, old house. We're looking to turn that current duplex into a four-unit building. So it'll be two one-bedroom apartments on top and two one-bedroom apartments on the first floor. So we're not looking to change the exterior of the building other than renovations for siding and windows, but no, not anything major exterior and pretty simple turning duplex into a four-plex. Have to take questions, if you have questions for me.
Any questions? Do I need to address the waivers?
Yes, I would, I would take those on out of the debate.
Okay. In accordance with the Towns of Norwood subdivision ordinance, section 4F, I respectfully request the following waivers. Public hearing, section 4K, the nature of the proposed improvement should not impact bodies or the community in general. The proposed changes will be confined to the existing structure and should not prove controversial. Monumentation, section 8C, the proposed subdivision does not involve land. It is an improvement to the interior of the existing structure submitted respectfully by Mr. Bickford. Do I hear a motion to accept the waivers request?
So move. I make a motion to accept the waivers.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, Richard? It's a roll call.
Discussion.
Discussion, is there any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Uh, yes.
And then, yes. So we'll move on to the fact finding. We, the Norwood Planning Board, make following findings regarding an application for proposed subdivisions submitted by Robert Keith Bickford for a proposed project located at One Main Street in Norwood, Maine, at 28 lot 46. The following findings are enumerated to align with criteria in the 2006 Norwood subdivision ordinance, section three. The app, the application is complete and application fees have been paid. On August 12th, 2024, the applicant paid the application fee. And follow, the planning board conducted a review of completeness and together with the recommendation of the code enforcement officer, deemed the plan application to be complete on September 12th of 2024. Vote on each one?
Yes.
Make a motion, accept.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. Two, proposed subdivision will not result in an underwater or air pollution. Finding not relevant. Proposed subdivision does not include any build-out or structures or disturbance of land. Proposed subdivision is only for lot split. Therefore, this item is not relevant.
Do we need to make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
No? Yes.
Yeah.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Senior moment on on there.
The proposed subdivision has sufficient water available for the reasonable needs of the subdivision. Finding in compliance. Attachment one of the application supported compliance with the requirements of the ordinance. The Norwood Water District has affirmed that there is adequate water supply at One Main Street property to have four separate apartment units, each with their own bathroom and kitchen.
Make a motion? Yes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Yes, I vote. Four, proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on an existing municipal or private water supply if one is to be used. Finding in compliance. Attachment one of the application from the Norwood Water District expressed no concern regarding any unreasonable burden on supply.
Make a motion? Accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. Proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or irreduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results. Finding not relevant. Proposed subdivision does not include any structures or expansion of footprint.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. Number six, a proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing or proposed. Finding in compliance. The addition of two additional housing units to the area will not cause unreasonable congestion or unsafe conditions for public roads. No additional public roads are planned as part of this proposal.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. Proposed subdivision will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal and will not cause unreasonable burden on municipal services if town services are used. Finding in compliance. Attachment two of the application supported compliance with the requirements of the ordinance. The Norwood Sewer Department has affirmed that the current sewer service is adequate for the proposed addition of two bathrooms and two kitchens.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. The proposed subdivision will not cause an unreasonable burden on the town's ability to dispose of solid waste if town services are used. Finding not relevant. This project does not require town services. Solid waste disposal is landowner's responsibility who will have access to Waste Management's residential transfer station.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Yes, I'll vote. Number nine, the proposed subdivision will not have an undue adverse effect on historic sites, archaeological sites, or significant wildlife habitat as identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Finding not relevant. The proposed subdivision doesn't involve footprint expansion.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Oh, okay, yes, Margaret.
So isn't, isn't this building considered historic?
So it is on the Historic Society, Town and Norwood Historic Society Registry, so it is a historic building. You know, with, with that said, we are working to preserve the aesthetic from the road, you know. We're maintaining, we did bring a door on it, on it. We're maintaining as much aesthetic, you know, historical value as we can.
So do you have to go through something in that, you know, because it has historic markings? Like it has that plate on there?
That's the Town of Norwood, so the Historic Society. You're thinking of the National Historic Registry, so that'd be a whole different thing. That's a national registry with a lot more rigorous application process. That plaque is done through research from volunteers in the Historic Society. I have worked with them. Becky, I've worked with Becky and worked with them on this project already.
Okay.
We're, we are, they're right across the street, so they've been over a couple times. We've looked at it a few times and they seem to be, we've worked and done.
So you're working with Becky?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure that they're, because it does have the marking on that building. Thank you.
John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Yes. The proposed subdivision conforms with all applicable standards and requirements of the subdivision ordinance, the comprehensive plan and other local ordinances. Finding in compliance. The proposed subdivision is in compliance with all other municipal ordinances. The most recent comprehensive plan adopted in February 1997 establishes two housing goals to encourage and promote affordable decent housing opportunities for all residents of the Town of Norwood and to provide a variety of types and densities of housing available to households of different sizes, ages, and incomes. Additionally, the comprehensive plan notes one significant issue. The downtown area is not experiencing many new housing starts. This proposed subdivision aligns with both housing goals and mitigates one of the enumerated issues.
Make a motion to accept?
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Number 11, the subdivider has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet all the review criteria, standards, and requirements contained in the subdivision ordinance. Finding in compliance. A statement from Marcus by Golden Sachs, attachment six in the application demonstrates compliance.
Make a motion to accept? I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. What, I see that there's something redacted there in that statement?
My account number.
I didn't hear what he said.
It says the account number.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Whenever situated entirely or partially within the watershed, any pond or lake, or within 250 feet of any wetland, great pond, or river, as defined in Title 38, Chapter 3, Subchapter 1, Article 2B, the proposed subdivision will not adversely affect the quality of that body of water or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that body of water. Finding not relevant. The entirety of the proposed subdivision is outside of a watershed of any pond or lake.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. The proposed subdivision will not alone or in conjunction with existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. Finding in compliance. Proposed subdivision doesn't include any expanded footprint to structures. As such, it will not adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. Based on federal emergency management agencies, flood boundary and floodway maps, and flood insurance rate maps, information is presented as to whether the subdivision is in a flood-prone area. If the subdivision or any part of it is in such an area, the plan shall require that principal structures in the subdivision will be constructed for the lowest floor, including the basement, at least one foot above the 100-year flood elevation. Finding in compliance. The proposed subdivision is entirely located within Zone X as laid out on the NFIP firm map, most recently revised May 6, 1996. Zone X is determined to be outside of the 500-year flood.
I make a motion to accept?
I'll say.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All freshwater wetlands within the proposed subdivision must be identified on any map submitted as part of the application. All wetlands shall be preserved to the greatest extent practicable. Finding not relevant. The proposed subdivision does not include or impact any freshwater wetlands.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. All river streams or brooks within or abutting, the proposed subdivision has been identified. All river stream or brooks shall be protected from any adverse development impacts. Finding not relevant. There are no river streams and/or brooks involved in proposed development.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The proposed subdivision provides for adequate stormwater management. Finding not relevant. There's no proposed development associated with this subdivision application.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote yes. If any lots in the subdivision have frontage on a river, stream, brook, great pond, or wetland, none of the lots created within the subdivision shall have a lot depth to shore, frontage ratio greater than five to one. Finding not relevant. The proposed subdivision does not involve the creation of any new lots.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The long-term cumulative effects of the proposed subdivision will not unreasonably increase a great pond's phosphorus concentration during the construction phase and life of the proposed subdivision. Finding not relevant. The proposed subdivision is not within the watershed of a great pond, and there's no construction associated with this proposed subdivision.
I make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. For any subdivision that crosses municipal boundaries, a proposed subdivision will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing public ways in an adjoining municipality in which part of the subdivision is located. Finding not relevant. The subdivision is wholly contained within the boundaries of the Town of Norwood.
I make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Decision. Based upon the above review and conclusions, the written application, supporting materials, and information submitted, testimony, and evidence submitted at the planning board meeting, a majority of the planning board members voted in favor of approving the application. Do I hear a motion to accept this statement?
I make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Appeal. Any person aggrieved by this decision may appeal to the Norwood Board of Appeals pursuant to the procedures set forth in the Town's Board of Appeals ordinance as applicable within 45 days of the date of the issuance of this written order of decision.
To authorize the chair design on your behalf.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
I vote this. Do that now or later?
We'll do it right after the meeting, if that works.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Discussion action regarding ordinance review. So we have the opportunity to enter into a contract with Kennebec Valley Council of Governments to have them review our subdivision and shoreline zoning ordinances to suggest any changes and update them to come more in compliance with the state of Maine. Both ordinances are guided by the state of Maine. And the subdivision ordinance was last reviewed in 2006. The shoreline zoning was in 2008. A lot of it doesn't align with current subdivision regulations. And again, it needs to be updated and come more into the line with the statutes of the state. So we have an offer from KBCOG that they, we will enter into a contract with us. They have provided a copy of the contract. Shall I read it, Richard, the contract or?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, all right.
It's, it's pretty much the legal lease as to how they would engage with the town. The different ways for them to review. My recommendation to you would be to allow them to take our existing ordinances, proposed amendments, and then come back and meet with the planning board to talk about what they changed, what they've added or taken away. Take your questions and comments, report right then, and then bring that back to you for your review. I think that's the most streamlined way to do it because candidly, some of these are just so far off. Changes in state statute have impacted that in a very rough.
Do I hear a motion to enter into a contract with the Kennebec Valley Council of Governments for them to review our subdivision and shoreline zoning ordinances? Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Was this part of the budget? For the town budget?
It is not. We would have to ask the selectmen to pay for it out of
contingency or an alternate account.
It is not in our budget.
Okay. I, and so on, so what initiated this, Ri- Richard? Is it just that they approached you?
No, so we're a member of the organization anyway, so we do receive the services as a discount. Quite frankly, what caused me to see how the proposed contract was, A, drawing up the previous document that you reviewed on your findings of fact and how not relevant that ordinance is, or seems to be when it comes to a subdivision of property because of a building split as opposed to land subdivision as one typically thinks. It's also precipitated the subdivision with the state's push for expanded housing opportunities in making that more affordable, the accessory dwelling unit changes and statute over the last, you know, 12 months or so. So we're really far behind. The shoreline zoning ordinance is something that we've seen in the office as being oftentimes irrelevant when we start talking about land use and we just end up falling back on state statute to enforce that. And we confer with DEP on that. DEP sets that, that threshold. Things to do with shoreline zoning that aren't incorporated in our ordinance would be, it used to be that square footage was a measure of expansion within the shoreline. Now that's one. That's just one basic item, but it's actually a pretty important item when you consider that. So I think we really need to make our way through a lot of our ordinances to make the necessary tweaks so that what we have will align to the state statute.
So I, the other question I have, and congratulations, Chucky, on your selectman. But does Chucky abstain? Or has he been sworn in yet as a selectman?
Yeah, he's an elected official on both boards.
Oh, so he can be a selectman and be on the planning board?
That's correct. If there's a conflict where a planning board decision may be subject to review by, it won't be subject to review by the select board, but if it goes into court or anything like that for action, that would be the point in time where he would have to determine an abstention. Or full, sorry, recusal.
So that's kind of, so he can be on the planning board and make a, a vote and then vote for it at the town select office too, town select board?
Depending upon the situation, yes. We've seen that.
There's no conflict of interest? I mean, there's no conflict there?
So there may be a conflict of interest depending upon the situation. But we've seen it in terms of, it's like the library board. We've had members of the library board who also serve on the select board and also go to the budget committee and approve that there. We've got different boards and committees that submit their requests and then they go before the budget committee and they cast a vote again on a request there too. So it's, it's not isolated. If it was an appointed position where one, where the select board appointed another board or committee, that might be brought into greater question. But where members of the public at large elected an individual to two boards, it's really up to the individual, the member, or the public to make a move on that. But it's not a conflict in office or in statute.
Any more discussion before we vote on going into a contract with KBCOG? John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So will they present at our next meeting in October? Or will they let us know?
Yeah, I am going to go to the select board next Wednesday.
Of course.
To hopefully secure the balance of the fund. Uh, to hopefully secure the balance of the funding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then candidly, if, if the select board doesn't appropriate from contingency, most likely is the account, then I, I will go to the TIF committee on your behalf next Tuesday, uh, the Tuesday after, uh, which is a very good argument to be made that, um, these board leases have an impact on economic development and so that would be my next line. I feel like now I'm going to pick your request to the select board. And see what the.
Okay. All right. Um, is there any other business? Then I'm adjourning at six thirty.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.